But I'll never get there.
Good evening, Rolling Meadows. This is the April 24th, 2018 Meeting of the City of Rolling Meadows. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon?
Here.
Bud Matts?
Present.
Majikis?
Here.
Gallo?
Here.
Vander?
Here.
Deastis?
Present.
Meanbass is absent.
Six present and one absent. We do have a quorum. First order of business is to approve the minutes from the April 10th, 2018 council meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Mr. Bud Matts has made that, and we have a second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the meeting? Seeing none, the question is, self the minutes be approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Nay? I do need a motion to deviate because we do have a young man who's going to retire after 39 years and 364 days, I'm told. Do I have such a motion? It has been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
You've been in this, here we go, you've been in the spotlight your entire life, right?
Yeah.
I know. First off, congratulations. I know your dad's at home watching this because he called me earlier today.
Yeah.
So, and how old is your dad?
Uh, 85.
85? He doesn't seem like a day over 65.
Nope.
So I'm told this is your last week?
It is.
Okay, and your wife did show me the list of all the things that you're going to do in retirement. So now you're somewhat semi-retired, so.
Okay.
But this proclamation is in honor of Robert Newell upon his retirement. However, after seeing that list, you're not really retiring about it. That's just the way it is.
Part-time job.
Part-time job. Full-time wife, part-time job. Bob Newell began his employment with the City of Rolling Meadows on April 26th, 1978, in the Public Works Department as a refuge collector, which evolved into being assigned as the operations semi-driver for several years, then transferred to Vehicle Services in 1995, then transferred to the Underground Utilities Division in 2003. No wonder you're in such good shape. You just kept moving. Whereas Bob Newell was involved in negotiating landfill disposal rates by conversion from yards to tons as a measure, and Bob Newell was active participant in the city's Public Works Department gain-sharing program and traveled to the 2003 American Public Works Association International Congress in San Diego, California, to provide a presentation on our program and developed a catch basin cleaning program in 2005 which enabled the storm sewer system to operate with a reduction in blockage occurrences. And for the folks on our street, we thank you. Bob Newell was designated as the lead operator of the city's Vector combination unit upon its purchase in 2006 and has operated this equipment with extreme care and with extreme efficiency. Now Bob Newell will forever be known by his coworkers as "The Vector Man" for his dedication for completing tasks with equipment that others said couldn't be done. I don't know if I should have read that part because if he says he can't do a project, you'll say it's in the proclamation. It's got to be true, right? Bob Newell has been well-known to be able to create mechanical solutions to operational problems and to be a process thinker and use his creativity to benefit the workplace. I.e., he is never at a loss for offering new ideas. Bob Newell has always demonstrated a passion for the Public Works Department, for the city of Rolling Meadows, for its residents, and businesses to provide exceptional public services to them. Bob has worked to provide outstanding friendly customer service to the residents of Rolling Meadows and has shown a constant pride, dedication, passion, and professionalism for his work. So therefore, I, Mayor Len Prina of the City of Rolling Meadows, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 27th, in the City of Rolling Meadows, Bob Newell Day.
Newell.
Newell. Excuse me. I'm sorry, I probably said it wrong about five times. When you see this tape, you go, okay. The entire, Newell. The entire city council and I, on behalf of the staff, and thank you for your forgiveness, staff and businesses of Rolling Meadows thank Bob Newell for his 40 years of service, loyalty, dedication to our community. He will be missed by all and is wished a great retirement, health, and happiness. It in witness whereof I here undo set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Rolling Meadows to be affixed this 24th day of April 2018. Thank you. And do you have any other of your group? We can take a brief.
No, I don't want to be there. There are photographers.
My first retirement picture, Bob.
Oh.
These are your guys.
Oh, that's nice.
There we go.
Do you want to get in?
All good. Thank you.
Are we good? All right.
Not tonight. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
This brings us to the mayor's report. Just a couple of quick points. One is, I did attend a grand opening for our new fitness center in downtown Meadows, and we were kidding about Bob's dad because he had called me before the meeting because we've installed new lights at Gateway Park, and he was very pleased that we had done that. So I thought that was appropriate to mention. Also, at a previous meeting, we always talk about it's good for members of the council to signal ahead. And Alderman Deastis did that at a previous meeting, and I should have given him the opportunity to speak first because he did signal ahead. So I wish to apologize for not giving you it. So thank you, Mr. Deastis, for being gracious about that. Are there any ward reports? Seeing none, no ward reports. The council meeting is now open to members of the audience for 20 minutes to address the city council on matters that are on the agenda or regarding other issues. We ask that persons wishing to address the city council keep their comments to five minutes in length. Comments must be addressed to the council as a whole through the mayor, and profanity may not be used in any form. The first signatory is Steve Hollish. Please step forward.
Good evening. As I only have five minutes to discuss issues, I'm going to keep them to probably only two major points for tonight. The major point that you're under second reading tonight is the vehicle sticker tax. I and many other residents feel that this has probably been handled extremely poorly within the council and the city staff and everybody else. You're putting the onus on the residents of the city to the tune of a half a million dollars. Maybe somebody should have looked at a different way to get that half a million dollars, maybe attach it to a bond fund or something else, and then put that money, let the residents say, hey, you're not going to have stickers this year. They're all going to be free, and next year, you're going to have a city sticker tax as from a gas tax. That would be fine. It took me a little over 28 years to get it down to where I only have two cars, small sticker tax, and now you put this through and I'm back to pain what I was when I started out. So to me, it's impacted me somewhat. I don't mind it. I just think it was handled very badly, and the city should really think about this going forward. And that means going forward in recycling. I've heard a lot of discussions on recycling. I know that that's a prime subject. Everybody wants to do is recycling, but yet costs are going up. And here it is. You're going to pass it on to the residents again. I don't think that's fair. We had a discussion, or I, you did, in the community, the whole, that said we want it to be equal to what it is now because our contract's running out. And if that's not the case, it's going to go out to bid. Staff came back and said it's going to be out to bid, but it's probably going to be even more than what our raise would have been. So here we are again at the crossroads of pushing it through to the residents again. We're going to pay more money. And all through these discussions, I've never heard anybody say, let's just not have recycling. I know that's really a hard subject, but maybe that's the way to go. People aren't really concerned. They're looking at the bottom line. It costs them too much to do recycling. They don't want to do it, so why should we? Maybe staff should look at it and say, how much more is it going to cost for our garbage people to pick up everything? Let it go as that and not put the cost on the residents. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward. The next person up to speak is Linda Ballantyne.
Good evening, council. Linda Ballantyne, Executive Director with the Rolling Meadows Chamber of Commerce. The Rolling Meadows Chamber has researched and reviewed the issue of video gaming in detail. The chamber has previously addressed the council on this subject matter and shared our findings that included the following. Video games rules and regulations as set forth by the Illinois Gaming Board and the State of Illinois. Presentation by local professionals in the field of video gaming terminals. Requests from small independent restaurants for assistance with bringing video gaming to our community under restrictive guidelines imposed by the state and city to exercise as a home rule community. Requests from shopping center strip owners dealing with long-term vacancies generating no income for themselves or revenue to the City of Rolling Meadows. Chamber board support as detailed in previous memorandums to the council with noted criteria under economic stimulus, economic development. The Rolling Meadows Chamber continues to work on keeping businesses economically viable, including generating new revenue sources for the city that will not negatively impact the businesses nor the residents. Our organization looks to the council for full support. We believe there can be a balance of new entertainment in the form of video gaming with imposed restrictions without giving up the community's hometown appeal as supporters this evening are respected local business owners and leaders, longtime residents, well-intentioned neighbors, and actively involved seniors who would prefer to spend their time, talent, money, and leisure activities in Rolling Meadows rather than going to another community offering yet another venue opportunity that Rolling Meadows lacks as an entertainment option and revenue generator for the qualifying independent businesses in the city. Thank you for the opportunity to bring video gaming research and data, information for discussion and consideration that will hopefully resolve in the council's favorable approval this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ballantyne. The next person up is Mark Mello.
Hello. I hope all the people are for video gaming because I think it'd bring more revenue into the town and help with the shortage of revenue we got because then people will come and spend money in the restaurants and throughout the town. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward. Dale. I saw you in the background there.
Hi, good evening. I'm here in support of the video gaming also. Linda's just about said it all, but I know I said a couple weeks ago when I was here that Outgrow did away with their city stickers with the revenue that they got from the video gaming in their town. It's not something I made up. I read it in the newspaper. So there's another source of revenue that we can have in the town to maybe offset some of the costs of our city stickers and our road fund. If not eliminating it, at least adding to it. So, and then two, if we have video gaming, who knows what else will want to come into town where we have it? As long as there's traffic, people will come. So it might benefit the downtown area if someone does come down there with video gaming. And who knows? The sky's the limit. When, I mean, Mont Prostic just, they had a, IDOT didn't approve their road usage fund there. They have a Texas Roadhouse that was going to go in there. If it doesn't go there, maybe city management, city staff should look at, you know, at least reaching out to them. I know a lot of people love to have a roadhouse in downtown Rolling Meadows. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming forward. That is the end of the secretaries tonight. This brings in ordinances for the second reading. Ordinance A, number 18-16, ordinance to amend the code for video gaming. The ordinance, if adopted, would amend Chapter 22 Business in the City Code to allow video gaming machines in the city of Rolling Meadows. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? So moved, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Deastis has made it. And we have a second. Is there a discussion? Ms. Majikis.
Thank you. I would just ask that we think about amending this so that we can, I'm in favor of it, but creating like a G1 classification for this so that we can combine with the A1, the A2, and all that, so that we can tailor-mate this to what we want. I took the time this weekend to do a little field trip with my husband and visit a few of these different video gaming sites and saw what is nice, what is not so appealing. And I think we really want to, we just don't want to open it up to anything and everything. We want it to have a little bit of control over, I know we have sign ordinances and things like that. So I think if we could maybe amend this to create a G1, and then we can, you know, tailor-make it to what we're looking for. I think that would be best for the city. Thank you.
So you're asking, your motion is to
amend.
amend, to add a G1 licensing to the video gaming?
Correct.
Do we have a second? Mr.?
I have a question.
Okay.
Would people with A1 and A2 licenses then need to purchase a G1 license under this plan?
I will, I'm going to, Mr. McCall.
I think it's, it's really, it's, it's up to creating a license that would be in keeping with this whole video gaming process so that we can actually, I think, kind of separate it out and create its own particular rules and regulations, which currently wouldn't exist. I mean, the ordinance is currently drafted would allow video gaming in the A1, A2, and A3 liquor licenses. The A3 license, as opposed to the A1 and A2, doesn't require a restaurant where the primary business is the serving of food. And there have been inquiries about what we call cafes where they'll serve breakfast, lunch, and hot and cold sandwiches, and then they're open till 2:00 a.m. So that was, that was the reason for this, as far as staff goes.
Mr., did that answer your question? Mr. Kromsack.
I think what you're trying to ask is, so if a person has an A1 or A2 or A3 at this point in time, so this new G1 that would be created, at least for the first year if they're applying for it, we would utilize the money that they've already paid for that license and rolled into whatever we make for that new license. So for instance, in A1, it's $4,600. So hypothetically, if we started a G1 and whatever that number, I'm just pulling it out of the hat. We haven't had conversations. Let's say it would be $5,500. So we would say $5,500 minus the 46 because they've already paid for that, for that first year. So I hope that's a quicker answer to what you're saying. That would be hopefully how we would tailor this, that if you've already paid for it for this year, then we would roll it so you would not have had an additional amount. But that's how, at this point in time, I would look at it.
So then, question, the only establishments that would actually get this, would get video gaming would have to have a G1 license?
Correct. That's what we're.
That would be the correct.
Okay.
So. Is that the best way to put it?
Best way to put it. I don't know if we got a second to that motion?
Okay. Yes.
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Bud Matts has seconded. Further discussion on the motion? Andrew?
Thank you. I'm against this to begin with, but I'm surprised we're trying to complicate it by adding a new classification of license. Also, if the point behind this, which we just heard was to offer entertainment options and to gin up money for the city, why would we try to limit it? So I'm surprised this is on the table because we just, we just said we want to give residents this option to give them entertainment, and we want to give this option to businesses to come into town. So why are we now restricting those businesses, which will limit the amount of money we can get? And why are we saying one thing? We want residents to be able to entertain themselves by gambling, and that now will bring restrictions on how they can entertain themselves. I'm surprised at the motion after we had the discussion about gambling in the first place. Like I said, I'm, I'm just asking these questions out of curiosity. I'm not going to support either the amendment or the ordinance itself. Thanks.
Do you want to further clarify what we would, or would you like to?
Sure. I think that Alderman Vander, I think the answer to that is to tailor, again, A1, A2, and A3 have their own feel right now. But if you make a G1, it allows us to tailor and refine how it's actually created. And I think also with having the liquor license, it would also allow us to stay, even though we have sign ordinances and we have sign requirements, it would allow us to make sure that if you're going for this G1, now you also have to live with these other items. So right now, when you have an A1 and A2 and A3, it has its own feel. So let's give the example right now, Bixby A3. So hypothetically, if they were going to be coming in, we know that they have signage that they have, but this would restrict it. And as you look at some of the video gaming places out there, some of the cafes, their windows are pretty much filled with signage. Even though we have an ordinance that talks about signage, this would be another avenue. If you want this G1, here's another avenue that we're trying to make sure it doesn't have that big video gaming out there. It doesn't have all the signs created. It allows the municipality as a home rule community to actually make sure some of those. So we are not restricting. We're just carving out and making sure that we're comfortable with what's actually in there. And it gives some of that platform for the city to make sure that the feel of the city stays the same. I would make the comment, if you haven't been to Buffalo Grove and Wheeling, it's very hard to know which ones are video gaming establishments because they've made sure that with the liquor license and with the gaming, it's very limited to knowing. You really have to know before you walk in there. So I hope that answers some of your, so we're not restricting. It's just carving out and making sure.
Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Deastis?
Okay, so. I understand what you said. Let's take it to the next step. Right now, there is no such thing as a G1.
That's correct.
So we would pass this ordinance this evening as it stands, and then at a future meeting, staff would come to council with their recommendations of what should be in the G1.
That is correct. And if the timing would work, hopefully by the May 8th meeting, we would have first reading, and then if the council wants to have more further discussion, we could kick it on to the council meeting, and then second reading would be right after that.
Okay. And then those businesses that currently have an A1, A2, or A3, you said in the first year, whatever amount that they paid would be a credit against whatever the G1 might be. What about going beyond that? I mean, I guess what I do not want to see happen is someone who has an A1, 2, or 3 have to pay whatever amount is for that and then pay an additional amount for a G1. That's not where we're going with this.
We're trying not to double up on the amount. So hypothetically, seeing that we haven't tailored it. So let's say hypothetically. So hypothetically, seeing that we haven't tailored it, so let's say hypothetically, and I don't know if this is the right way, Jim, but let's say a person buys the A1 and then, again, that's $4,600, but to elevate or to go to that next stage, if you want that video gaming, now for the G1, you might pay it an additional amount. So that is an additional amount, but you're asking for a higher level of your, so you have the A1 plus the G1 and that would be your amount. So I think we can do it that way, that if you are asking for the gambling, then we can create that other and then carve it out because you are asking for the extra part. Jim?
Well, I think, I think another approach is that the ordinance is currently drafted, imposes a tax on the business owner and the operator. And we can, we can work all that in. I don't, you know, I don't know that, we haven't really talked about this G1 license very much. I'm not putting words in the city manager's mouth. I don't know that you even have to charge anymore for the G1, to be honest with you, because there's, there's money coming in off the machines and off the video gaming license. And if the city thinks that it needs to be increased, so be it. I don't know one way or the other.
Okay, but I just want to, at this point, I mean, I agree with what Laura has said, that we can put this G1 part in here, but, and then we can pass this tonight.
Yeah.
And then at a future meeting, we can, or even at a council meeting, we can review whatever suggestions staff may have and then vote on those or adopt those, amend those into the current ordinance.
That's correct. And then we do have the video gaming ordinance passed.
Okay, so I'm, I'm okay with that then, and so that we can talk about the details of G1 at a future meeting, whether it's blacking out the windows or making sure people don't double up on having to pay for licenses, how much it's going to be, et cetera. So I'm okay with that, I would support Laura.
So this will move it forward tonight?
Correct.
As if, if the motion is passed as amended? Mr. McCall, did you have a further comment or no?
Well, no, I'm confused. And we've got the motion on the table to.
Amend.
Amend to go to the G1 license.
Right.
But we're going to pass the ordinance. If we pass the ordinance, then the video gaming under this ordinance is now allowed. And so tomorrow, so I can then apply for a license based on this ordinance. And then we're going to subsequently come back with a G1 license that we don't really even, at this point, know what it's going to provide for. I'd rather, I'd rather do them in tandem so that they're both done at the same time. I don't think it's going to hurt anything doing them that way.
So your recommending, your recommendation is to pass the G1 license but postpone the ordinance until the next meeting?
My, my, my recommendation would be to ask the council to pass the motion to, really, it's really a motion to, it's really a motion to postpone, I think, more than a motion to amend, because we don't know what we're amending it to. So I think it's a motion to postpone it until May 8th, at which time we can have an ordinance that will detail and provide for the G1 license. That's my, that's my.
The only thing is then you would have first reading on the 8th without a second reading.
Yeah, but currently you've got, you're going to pass an ordinance that is going to allow it, but you have nothing to regulate it.
Okay, Ms. Majakas.
Thank you.
Is your motion out here?
Thank you. I didn't bring this up to try and cause confusion and, you know, all that, or to deter anybody, excuse me, from coming to Meadows and stuff. I'd rather us be proactive as a council and, you know, tailor make this for our city and what we're all comfortable with, as opposed to passing something and then having regrets that we weren't more proactive about it. So I'm sorry if I'm causing confusion or all that. I was just hoping that we'll be able to create this G1 in accordance with the A1 and But I'm not the attorney.
Okay. Mr. Cannon.
Thank you. I guess, Barry, I guess I would ask a question. Let's assume for a second we don't pass this, just, we just don't do anything with the G. Don't we have controls that we can handle a lot of these things right now? I mean, we'd have some sign ordinances right now.
We do have, but again, this allows us to tailor certain other items. And with our current sign ordinance, we do allow certain amounts of advertising on those windows. And that's what I'm trying to say, if you want that flexibility, then you tailor it. And we can also go back to the sign ordinance too. We're just trying, there's some other things in the sign ordinance that we would actually want to clean up if we're actually looking at it. So again, I understand what Jim McCall is stating and that you've heard me say this before, ordinances can be passed and amended. So you can always pass this ordinance at this point in time and then we go through the G1 and then amend it at that point in time. And I understand what city attorney Jim McCall is also stating. I would hope if this gets postponed, that potentially, if we're here at May 8th, maybe there's a waiver. I know we haven't done this in a long time, but maybe the waiver of first reading so we can have them both passed at the same time. I know that will entail some more discussion, but hopefully we can have those discussions during the first reading and then obviously do the waiver so we can go straight to second reading so they would both be passed. Because again, a lot of people on the dais, we've spent a lot of time on video gaming. I know that you have actually gone to look at some of the establishments and I hope anybody who visits them sees the difference between well regulated, monitored and also ones that are wide open and what they can advertise.
Okay, but let me ask the sister question to what you just talked about. So the biggest issue here, you think, is signage? I mean, because I guess, you know, Barry, here's where I'm coming from, I'll just make it simple. I'm not really overly opposed to this, but I just, you know, we just keep on adding layers and layers of rules and regulations. And all I'm saying is it really necessary? You know, I feel like as a town, we usually have control over much, like most issues. Do we need to put another layer in? It just seems to be overkill, in my opinion. It's an opinion of mine only, I'm not asking everybody to agree with me, but it just seems like we're just layering another, another layer of rules that we don't need to do.
I would put it this, that we have the flexibility to do this because, and again, if you visit all the different locations, each one has its own different feel. Some of them are well maintained and again, some are not. But I think in my eyes, when I look at some of the video gaming, that signage really is kind of appalling. And we've been very fortunate at this point in time to not have some of those windows that it looks like is some residents have called Las Vegas. I'm trying to make sure that, yes, we have rules and everything else, it's just one more layer. And I understand what you're saying, that you don't think layer upon layer, but I think that's the way to protect the look, the feel and make sure that the community has that overall. And in no way, as I said before, to restrict, because again, I think Alderman Gallo has stated last meeting, you know, wide open, let the free market, I'm putting words in your, but allow the free market to actually dictate how many cafes, how many restaurants are going to be open and then see what happens. But in my estimation, if I just look at some of the roads and some of the vacancies, I only see 10 to 12 potentially that could open. And that's counting two current restaurants that could potentially open up on their own.
I guess the only last comment I'd make is I, you know, I guess I would rather us dive into the sign ordinance and straighten that out. It sounds like from your earlier comment, did you feel like there might be some issues there? Why don't we clean up that whole ordinance?
Mr. Cannon, you've been at the apple twice, so.
I never, I never stopped.
I understand, but go ahead.
I can't ask more than one question?
Go ahead. Two times, but go ahead, Mr. Cannon, finish up.
I know there was a limit on questions. So that's all I'm suggesting. Again, I'm not, maybe people don't agree with me, but I just think I'd rather clean up what we got to clean up and not add another layer of licenses for, for liquors, in my opinion. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo, sir. Thank you for your patience also.
You're welcome. Thank you for calling on me. I guess for, for me, I'd like a little bit of clarity, not only for myself, but for the residents at home in my ward. With the subject at hand about establishing a G1 to follow suit with this, what, what are those top fears or factors that we're trying to get ahead of or mitigate or alleviate? What are those? What are the fears that we have to establish this G1?
Well, I would, from my perspective, I, I wouldn't call them fears, it's just.
Factors.
Factors.
What are the issues?
It's, it's just, you know, the, the council, the staff never had really and didn't ask for any clear direction relative to this. It was just, we're going to pass a video gaming ordinance, fine. Under the state, give me a video gaming statute, you need to have, amongst other things, to make you eligible, you need a liquor license for the liquor to be sold for consumption on premises. Under our code of ordinances, there are three licenses that do that, the A1, the A2 and the A3. If you read our liquor code, the A1 and the A2 are what we've been calling sit-down restaurants, where the primary function of the business is the sale of meals. The A3 license, on the other hand, is more of a bar situation. There is no requirement that there be a sale of food, but they may have a light food service as that's defined in our code, which consists of serving hot and cold sandwiches. Since there was no direction, and staff didn't ask for direction, the council call came up pretty quick. The ordinance that they have before you, the ordinance that I drafted, meets the requirements of the state statute since those three liquor licenses allow for consumption of alcohol on the premises. Now, if what you, what you want, within your own legislative judgment, if what you want is a small store that sells hot and cold sandwiches for breakfast and lunch, no dinner, but they're open till 2:00 a.m., then that's potentially what you're looking for and looking at. If you want that, that's fine.
My question was, what are we afraid of that constitutes us now having to develop a G1? What are those, what are those fears? Not, not what you just went through, but what are the fears that we're trying to get ahead of with a G1? What are those?
I have not had a conversation with the city manager specifically as to what he would, he would be looking for to incorporate into the G1 license. I mean, I'm just, I'm just speaking for myself and I'm just giving you the background from where this ordinance came from, so.
I would, the chair would just add that since this came out, I've had many conversations with our city attorney, staff, members of the business community that are looking to come forward with this and, and many residents. And the one thing that we have heard from residents over and over again is, we would like restaurants, we would like Rolling Meadows to have activity that is more business activity. So I, the vision that I hear for doing this, and along with, we also have a ordinance in to have incentives for restaurants to open up, is that we would like this to work so that we are bringing more, more establishments that would serve food and be more beneficial to the city so that the city would have not only video gaming, but they would also have the opportunity to catch food and liquor taxes from them. So that's just, I'm just adding that from my conversation. If you want to follow up, and then Mr. Diastis.
Alderman Gallo, I think that what your question is, what else could be tailored in that G1? I think again, as Alderman Cannon said, we could always go back to the sign, but I think it also allows the city council with the liquor license to dictate inside the building itself. So in the gaming, state gaming, it talks about the differences, you have to make sure that people know, here's the gaming part, here's the restaurant part.
Isn't that already, the parameters are already illustrated by the state, correct?
It is, but it just, part of that says, part of that says, you could have a court, you could have a little fence. Does the city council want a kind of wall that makes the separation? Does something else? That's also going back into that G1 would allow us to deal with the signs, would deal with the interior, all those kind of pieces, but that's some of the ideas at that point.
So, Mr. Diastis, you came forward.
Thank you. We're talking about, the debate is on the issue of the motion, the amendment of the G1. I think we've gotten a little off topic.
Yes.
But getting back to G1, we have an ordinance in place and we're talking about the possibility of, of making an amendment to that in the form of a G1. I think that if, I think it's imperative that we pass this ordinance tonight and then have staff come back to us in two weeks and give us what that amendment should be. I know that it opens up the opportunity for an establishment to come to the city and say, I'd like to apply. But I think our manager and obviously the liquor commissioner can say, we're not taking on any applications for two weeks. And that, that resolves that, that potential issue of somebody's going to get in under the wire. I mean, I agree with Joe saying, what are we, what are we all worried about? I see there's some concern, some questions, but that's really something that we should be talking about. So whether we incorporate the G1 now or Ms. Majakas takes it out, we pass the ordinance and it comes back in two weeks and we add an amendment of G1 at that point, I think that would work too. I think right now, we need to, we should move this forward and, and knowing that we won't take any applications for two weeks, we probably don't even have papers for people to sign an application yet. And that could probably take us a week to do that alone. So I'm all for either agreeing and putting it in there, a G1 as an amendment yet to come, or if Ms. Majakas and Mr. Bud Matts prefer to withdraw, we pass the ordinance and staff goes under the direction that we're not going to take an application for two weeks and you come back with a recommendation of what we should, your recommendation of what the G1 should be and what restrictions we may want to place on it. Because right now, we don't have, we don't know what the restrictions are. We've talked about signs, we've talked about roads, we've talked about a wall. So I think that that all needs to be flushed out one way or another, whether it's at a, the next council meeting or whether it's at a community of the whole meeting. But I think we need to have that in writing in front of us so we can look at this and say, yes, we like these ideas or no, we don't like these ideas. And then we agree on what it is that we want this to be. In the meantime, we don't have to take applications. And I don't think there's anybody beating our doors down, other than we've had inquiries. We've had inquiries for the last two or three years. I think whatever way Ms. Majakas and Mr. Bud Matts want to go, I'm all for it. Let's just move this thing along and put the ordinance on staff to come back to us with their recommendations of restrictions they feel are required.
Thank you, Mr. Diastis. Mr. McCall.
To Mr. Diastis' point, you know, as far as I know, we currently have no available Class A1, Class A2 or Class A3 licenses available.
Correct.
So if a new entity wanted to come into town, there would have to be an ordinance before the city council to increase the number of licenses.
Okay.
And currently, from what I understand, there's only one A3 license in town.
Correct.
So the rest would be A1 and A2 licenses, which I don't think, absent signage or other issues, I don't think staff would really get a problem with.
No. Thank you. Ms. Majakas, since this is your.
Baby.
I was going to say, is your amended ordinance, if you still want to, you can still go forward and I think we can, we can, we can make this work tonight and start the clock on it.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I don't want to hold this up. I didn't mean to cause this big problem. Like I said. Like I said, I just feel that it's important for us to tailor-made. So, I'm not going to hold this up if I don't have the support for, you know, the G1 and stuff. I would hope that we could at least get the information, as Alderman Diastis stated, and that were brought forward to us in the next two weeks or something, so that we can get the, you know, clarification of it all. I would ask the council members to, when you get a free moment, kind of visit a couple of these sites, so you can see actually what I'm talking about, so you can see the difference. So, you are aware of it, because it's, there is a big difference when you go into the two different types of establishments, so.
So, we'll move forward with the vote on the G1. I will remind council that tonight, since we only have six members, we need four to pass any ordinance tonight. So, since we're done with discussion, will the clerk call the roll on the amendment to the G1 license to the video ordinance, gambling amendment? Vinnie? Yes.
Budmatz?
Yes.
Majikas?
Yes.
Gallo?
No.
Baner?
No.
Diastis?
Yes.
Cannon?
No.
It's 3-3, so it fails. This brings us back to the original ordinance. Is there any discussion on the original ordinance? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Majikas?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
No.
Diastis?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmatz?
Yes.
That ordinance does pass, and we'll move forward. This brings us to ordinance B, number 18-17, amend the code for natural gas tax. This ordinance, if adopted, would amend the City of Rolling Meadows Code of Ordinances, Chapter 102 Taxation, to include Article 11 Municipal Natural Gas Use Tax. Is there a motion to adopt this, this ordinance? Mr. Baner has made that. Do I have a second? Mr. Gallo has seconded. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk, I'm sorry, Mr. Diastis, I apologize.
Because there's going to be some residents that will buy new vehicles or move into Rolling Meadows after June 30th, the June 30th due date, to purchase stickers, and prior to the current termination date of the sticker tax of December 31st, I don't believe that it's fair for those residents to have to buy a one-year vehicle sticker for a period of months for their car, truck, motorcycle, or trailer, and still have to pay a national gas tax. Similar to the amendment Mr. Budmatz offered a couple of weeks ago, I'd like to propose a compromise amendment. My amendment is, upon notification to the City of Rolling Meadows of the commencement of the collection of the new natural gas tax, the City of Rolling Meadows City sticker tax will immediately be terminated. No further enforcement of the city sticker tax will take place after the collection of the new natural gas tax begins. This, I think, is a fair way of allowing new residents and those who are buying vehicles after the collection starts, to say, you don't have to buy a sticker for a period of a couple of months. There's no refunds allowed, there's nothing else, it just says, once the city is notified that the new tax is in effect, the city tax, the city sticker tax is terminated. Whether that's October, or November, or whenever it is, I think it's just a fair way of treating the residents of the city.
Thank you. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Mr., thank you, Mr. Budmatz, it has been seconded. Is there a discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Gallo?
Yeah.
Baner?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmatz?
Yes.
Majikas?
Yes.
Six in favor, that does pass. This brings us back to the original ordinance, number 18-17. Is there any further discussion on that ordinance? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? I'm sorry, Mr. Cannon.
Thank you. I was wondering if I could direct a question to Mr. Crumstock. I was wondering, you know, in all the write-ups we've been getting all of these months, we keep on talking about we have expenses of $100,000 relative to city stickers. As we, as a council and the city itself, can we expect to see any kind of reduction in either staff or whatever, because that $100,000 is not going to be needed to be used for all kinds of things, including administration?
None on this subject.
No, I'm not, I'm talking about in general. If we have $100,000, if we have $100,000 in cost, I'm assuming 50% of it has to be administration, right?
No, it's production, it's mailing, a whole bunch of other things.
But who does all that, though?
Production, we send that out, that's a third party who does it. The stuffing, that's it. The mailing, we're using United States Post Office. So, again, that's all, when you look in the budget, those are technically not labor issues, those are third parties and other items.
Well, how about the people who actually process all the stuff for the month of June that we always are told that are overwhelmed? Aren't there two or three people doing that all day long?
With their other regular duties, plus administration is helping on that, but it's everybody doing their regular stuff, and this additional.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Baner?
Yes.
Diastis?
No.
Cannon?
No.
Budmatz?
Yes.
Majikas?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Four in favor and two opposed, it does move forward. This brings us to ordinance number 18-18, amend the zoning code for side yard setbacks. This ordinance, if adopted, would modify the setback requirements for the corner side yard from 30 feet to 20 feet. The setback will allow structures, including fences, sheds, decks, and others. The 20-foot setback will allow residents to use more, use of more of their lots by preserving visibility and line of sight for drivers turning corners. At the March 6, 2018 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, public hearing, a unanimous 702 vote was provided in support of this proposed zoning tax amendment. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Go, Mayor.
Ms. Majikas has made it, and it has been seconded. Is there a discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Diastis?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmatz?
Yes.
Majikas?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmatz?
Yes.
Majikas?
Yes.
Six in favor and none opposed. This brings us to ordinance D, the ordinance number 18-19, amend the code for restaurant incentives. This ordinance, if adopted, would amend Chapter 102 Taxation of the Code of Ordinances by adding section 102-147 Restaurant Tax Incentives. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Mr. Diastis has made it, and we have a second? Ms. Majikas has made a second, thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Chuck. It must be the suit matching in with the coat today. I apologize, it's twice I've done it for you tonight, please forgive me.
That's quite right. This has been a long time coming. We started, we came up with an idea many months ago. The Economic Development Committee reviewed this and discussed this for, again, several months. I am very much in favor of this. I think it allows us, it gives us another tool, and, and another arrow in our quiver, as they say, to hopefully entice some new restaurants to come into the city. We've got space available, and I think that our staff and Martha will probably be able to use this when they're talking to restaurateurs. I mean, all things being equal, as one restaurateur told me, if I can save some money, and everything else is the same, I'll take the deal. So, I'm very much in favor of this, and I, hopefully, the council will support this this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Diastis, and Mr. Cannon, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be supporting this also. I, I'm disappointed the way it's, it's been structured. I compliment that we got something going. I, I think it misses the mark in some cases. I've expressed my opinion in the past, I won't dwell on it tonight, but I will be supporting it, but I wish we had done it in a different way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Any further, Mr. Baner?
Thank you. I've been fairly consistent with not supporting this, so just FYI, I'm a, I'm a no. Our conversation earlier this evening about allowing gambling in town also raises the question, in my mind at least, if we're going to be given rebates back to restaurants or businesses that come in with gaming machines, that apparently are going to be the salvation of some of the restaurants in areas of this town, why would we rebate their, their money if they're making tons of money off these gaming machines? That's just a question of mine, that, that was brought up earlier tonight by, by our conversation about these gaming machines. So, I'll still be a no, though. Thank you.
Mr. Crumstock, would you like to comment?
Sure. The cafes, if they do not have a full sit-down restaurant, they would not be entitled to this. So, again, how the restaurant incentive is really for restaurants, where it's a family slash sit-down overall. So, it really has to be a restaurant who's coming in with the secondary to your question. I hope that answers it a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Crumstock. Any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmatz?
Yes.
Majikas?
Yes.
Gallo?
No.
Baner?
No.
Diastis?
Yes.
Cannon?
No.
Budmatz?
Yes.
Majikas?
Yes.
Four in favor and two opposed, the ordinance is adopted. This brings us to the ordinance in for the first reading. Ordinance E is to amend the code to establish parking restrictions on certain streets. This ordinance, if adopted, would establish parking restrictions in certain locations on certain public streets in the city. These streets are Apollo Drive, both sides of the street for the entire length, Ring Road, both sides of the street for the entire length, and Squibb Avenue, both sides of the street for the entire length. Is there a motion to move this ordinance forward for a second reading? Mr. Baner has made that. Do I have a second? It's been seconded. Is there any discussion? Yes, Mr. Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I would just ask staff, when we, I assume we'll pass this, I would just ask, because of personal experience I've had in my neighborhood, that we make the no parking signs larger. People don't seem to see them, I don't know why. I have one right in front of my house, people get out, look at it, leave their car there anyhow. So, I would just ask, maybe we would make them a little larger if it's possible, since we have our own sign equipment now. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmatz?
Yes.
Majikas?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmatz?
Yes.
Six in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. The next on the, the item on the agenda is the consent resolution. It consists of eight items, items G through N. Does any alderman wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Mr. Diastis?
N.
The, the chair declares that there will be seven items in one, excuse me. Seeing that there were only, there will be seven items, we, the chair declares it in one motion to consider all seven resolutions. Is there such a motion? It's been made to Mr. Baner. The question is, shall all seven resolutions be adopted? G, Resolution Number 18-R-30, approve the local public agency agreement for federal participation with the Illinois Department of Transportation for proposed Euclid Avenue, Rolling Road to Salt Creek Bike Path Project, construction and construction engineering costs. The resolution, this resolution was adopted at the April 10, 2018 council meeting. This resolution, if adopted, would authorize the execution of an agreement between the City of Rolling Meadows and the Illinois Department of Transportation for construction and construction engineering costs associated with the proposed Euclid Avenue Bike Path between Rolling Road and Salt Creek. H, the Resolution Number 18-R-31, award a contract for the construction engineering services for Euclid Avenue Bike Path Project. This resolution was postponed at the April 10, 2018 meeting. This resolution, if adopted, would authorize the approval of a construction engineering services agreement for the federal participation for engineering services needed for the Euclid Avenue Bike Path Construction Project. I, Construction, Resolution Number 18-R-34, is to approve the amendment to Nature Care's Outreach Coordination Agreement with the NCC LLC. This resolution, if adopted, would provide for 12 months' extension of Nature Care to commence making full payments to the city for an outreach program to educate people on the safe and legal use of marijuana. Resolution Number 18-R-835, award a contract for pavement patching. This resolution, if adopted, will authorize the award of a contract for the preparation and installation of a hot mix asphalt pavement, pavement patching on selected city streets for the 2018 season. K, Resolution Number 18-R-36, the award contract for thermoplastic pavement striping. This resolution, if adopted, would authorize the city to award a contract for thermoplastic pavement striping and marketing, markings. L, Resolution Number 18-R-37, was awarded contract for sanitary manhole inspections. This resolution, if adopted, would authorize the award of a professional service contract for the inspections of sanitary sewer manholes at selected locations. M, Resolution Number 18-R-38, award a contract for the pipe lining for sanitary sewer, sewers. This resolution, if adopted, would award a construction contract for the pipelining of sanitary sewers and storm sewers for the city of rolling, for the city's 2018 rehabilitation program. Again, the question is, shall all seven resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Cannon?
No.
Budmatz?
Yes.
Majikas?
Yes.
Five in favor and one opposed, they do pass. That brings us to Resolution N, the number 18-R-39, is to award a contract for emergency storm sewer repairs on Campbell Street. This resolution, if adopted, would contract for construction services to install approximately 130 linear feet of 21-inch diameter storm sewer and 148-inch diameter structure on Campbell Street to replace a 21-inch diameter concrete pipe that has failed due to substantial collapses in the location, several locations. Do I have a motion? And Mr. Baner has made it, it has been seconded. Mr. Diastis, you pulled it, so you have first opportunity.
Thank you. Several questions here. The pipe that's being removed, what kind of a pipe is it, and, and how those, what kind of water flows through there here?
Okay, Mr. Vogel.
Thank you, Mayor. Stormwater pipe discharges ultimately to Salt Creek was built, to the best of our estimation, back in the 1950s. It was non-reinforced concrete pipe. We've seen in several locations, typically one or two a year, where ground settlement is usually the indication, or a washout, because the pipe starts to collapse.
Okay. And, I'm reading here that the budget, we have $125,000 in that stormwater fund this year? Is that correct, or am I?
Is that right? Mr. Vogel, yes, Mr. Vogel.
Are there other plans? I know, over the past several years, we have done work along the creek and out on the west side. Do we have further plans on expending these funds this year to finish some of those stormwater projects as well?
Yes, where we have identified failing pipe, but not necessarily collapsed, as this one was, we can schedule that work. We also are in, I believe, two cycles of the, what we call the flared end sections, or the pipe discharges to Salt Creek that we have contracted for. There's more coming up, and those will all be reflected in the... up, and those will all be reflected in the capital improvement plans that we review annually and submit and update annually.
Okay, and further to that, what about non-pipe? What about areas along the creek that we had done some gabion baskets, and then we do some ponds on the other side, that we were shoring up the shores and that? We have anything planned for stormwater management for that as well?
We have nothing immediately planned for that, we do have some areas down near Algonquin Road, and some of those areas that we hope to at least do some, I would say, minor or some interim improvements. What the city council has done for probably about 20 years now is seek out IEPA grants for most of the work that we've done over the years, in terms of gabion baskets, streambank stabilization. Those funds are becoming harder and harder to get, but I do recall our city engineer did an assessment, probably about five, six years ago, I believe, to update the previous one. We completed Phase 4, as we called it, of the Salt Creek Streambank Project, just upstream from Barker Avenue about three years ago, so we will certainly be assessing that in the future years and seeing what the conditions are. I have not personally received any complaints from residents anywhere along Salt Creek recently in terms of immediate need, but we do, if not every year, every other year, send staff and/or the engineers out to assess those conditions.
Okay, I don't want to get off topic.
I think we're off topic, because we're, and you asked a couple of different questions, I think we need to get back on the vote for this one.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Diastis.
So, with respect to the $11,000, then I'm okay with that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Baner?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, that does move forward. This brings the council to other businesses and reports. Tonight, I do have boards and commission appointments, I have spoken with members of the council, and just so the viewing public, the board of the, we're doing reappointments for the Board of Fire and Police Commission, Mr. Ted Loesch. The Police Pension Board, we have someone stepping down, and Shawna Brower has graciously accepted to become a member of the Police Pension Board. The Urban Affairs Commission will be headed by Mike Hutchins. Economic Development Committee will be John Sokolowski and Laura Majikis. The Electrical Commission will be Scott Puhl and Steve Robarek and Terry Valentine. Is there a motion to approve the appointments and reappointments? Mr. Baner has made it, it has been seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Diastis?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Six in favor and none opposed, all appointments will be moved forward, thank you. Does the clerk have a report?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Crumstock, items of interest?
Thank you very much, Mayor, and city council, and I actually have one new one to add that came in, but obviously, we would like to thank everybody who participated in this year's Earth Day activities. Assistant to, our Assistant Public Works Director, Rob Horn, was in the creek for part of it, so I just had to say that. But again, we do appreciate everybody who came out on Saturday, April 21, to do the Earth Day cleanup. And then obviously, later on, coming up, we'll have more about the Business and Community Showcase, that is scheduled for this Saturday, April 28, at the Rolling Meadows High School, 2901 Central Road. We do want to mention that also this Saturday, April 28, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, the Police Department will be conducting with the DEA, a drug take-back event. It will be here at the parking lot. And a reminder, we still have, from Cook County, a gray box here on the second floor that you can always drop off, shall we say, drugs that you are not using, or you have, you're clearing out an area, but the Saturday events, again, there are no questions, they take anything and everything, so again, another great activity for the drug take-back event for this Saturday in the parking lot between 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM. And then just a friendly reminder, yard waste collection has started, and street sweeping has started throughout the community, so again, we try telling people, if you have any questions, please contact Public Works, but also, yard waste should go on one side, and your rough use should go on the other side. The other item that I do want to mention is that the Rolling Meadows High School Township High School District, 214, will be conducting a preview night on Wednesday, May 9, at the Rolling Meadows High School Theater, starts at 7:00 PM. This event is actually scheduled so residents can hear about several, several construction projects that are planned for the high school, they deal with renovation, repair, and there's an addition that's actually coming up. If you have any questions, please contact Rolling Meadows High School Principal, Ellen Hart, at 847-7108-5610, I'm trying to keep it at the high school. Obviously, coming up on Saturday, May 12, from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM, the fire chief and the Rolling Meadows Fire Department will be volunteering to be cooking at the Golden Heers Council Pancake Breakfast, that actually happens at Park Central, 3000 Central Road. There is a fee for this event. Right after you're done with the pancake breakfast, you can walk over to the museum, and they will actually be conducting a open house, and again, that goes from about 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The big event on that day is actually the Garden Club Hometown Plant and Craft Sale, and again, that's Saturday, May 12, it goes from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and that's at the Public Works Building located at 3200 Central Road. Obviously, we do have the 16th Annual Dunkin' Donuts Cop on a Rooftop Promotion that will be taking place on Friday, May 18, last year was the first time that we participated, but the 16th Annual Event will happen between 5:00 AM and 2:00 PM at the Dunkin' Donuts located here at 3350 Kirchhoff Road, and if you want additional information, please contact Detective Casinos at 847-870-2693. And then obviously, the reminder that we want to mention to people is that the April Electronic E News and Views is actually on our website, and then future topics for May committee meetings, the Economic Development Meeting will happen on Tuesday, May 1, at 6:00 PM. Tentative items for discussion, deal with the new business feedback, there's Business and Community Showcase update, the restaurant incentive update, just so the committee members know that it passed tonight, and then obviously, Business Advocate Highlight and Chamber of Commerce and some others. The Planning and Zoning Commission will be meeting on Tuesday, May 1, but they do not have any hearings for that, they will actually be conducting this meeting to do some administrative items and discussion, but again, there are no hearings at that. The add-on, which is not in front of you, is actually between the Rolling Meadows Park District, the Rolling Meadows Police Department, the Illinois Triad, and Salt Group, and then our new business, obviously Village Bank and Trust, which is the Wind Ross Family, on Wednesday, May 16, between 10:00 AM and 1:00 PM, at the Rolling Meadows Senior Center, they will be doing a presentation called Savvy Seniors. I wish I had more about it, but I would tell you, we'll try getting you more stuff, but there is limited seating available, so please contact the Rolling Meadows Park District Senior Center office if you'd like to participate in this event that is scheduled by the groups that I just mentioned. So with that, that is out of interest for this meeting.
Mr. Crumstock, could you repeat the date and the time for that meeting?
The Savvy Senior Event is for Wednesday, May 16, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. It is going to be held at the Rolling Meadows Senior Center, and again, that's 3705 1000 Drive, but to sign up, because they do have limited seating, you do need to go to the Park District Senior Center office.
Thank you. New businesses, Mr. Crumstock?
We really have two, nothing really too much to highlight on that, one was a home occupation, one was not.
Thank you. Mr. Vogt, you are on tap now, Staff Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. The April report from the meeting that was held April 11, I'll just highlight a few things. One, you've already taken business on with regards to the recommendations to prohibit parking on Squibb Avenue, Ring Road, and Apollo Drive, appreciate those considerations, that will be an improvement to that area for traffic flows. Second item, Keith Court Resident Parking Survey, we've got a request to switch the sides of the street where parking is prohibited. We've received several responses from residents, and we'll be discussing that at our May meeting for recommendations, that if we concur with the recommend, with the request, that would come forward to you in a, in ordinance form to change the side of the street that parking is prohibited on. Third item, Arbor Drive Curve Safety, again, just some, an item of business that we had reviewed earlier, but we received at the April meeting, accident history from the Police Department, and talked with the city engineer about when that street does get resurfaced, that there's some geometric changes that should be made there, if we are successful this year, or at some point in the future with regards to our block grant program with Cook County, that may see that improvement take place once we are able to put new water mains in in that location. Lastly, we had a resident request to look at the Rowling Fairfax intersection regarding the orientation of the apartment complex driveway. We are in communications with the Police Department to assist with the apartment complex owner, to see if we can work out something to improve the sightline and situation at that location, so that's the staff traffic report for April.
Thank you, Mr. Vogt. I just have one question, is that we talked about getting the bike community involved with the traffic advisory report, do we have anyone showing up, or?
Yes, we have a representative who also serves with the Environmental Committee, who's been in attendance at most of the meetings in recent months.
Since we have all these bike paths, it would be nice that we have some input from those folks, thank you.
Yes, she has been attending most of the meetings.
Thank you. That brings us to Business and Community Showcase, Ms. Coroner, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, we are pleased to announce the first-ever City of Rolling Meadows Business and Community Showcase to be held on Saturday, April 28, at Rolling Meadows High School. The event, open to the public and free of charge, runs from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. The showcase is set up so local businesses can network and show their services and products to residents and other leaders. This is a great way to shop and learn about Rolling Meadows businesses in a relaxed environment. To date, over 35 businesses or community groups are registered to host displays. If you are a Rolling Meadows business owner, we still have room if you want to participate. For more information on the exhibitor list and other aspects of the event, please visit the city website. To further enhance the showcase experience, businesses will be free to give out various items, including samples, pens, coupons, calendars, calendars, et cetera. The city will be also giving away special giveaway items. The following activities will take place during the event, a performance by the Carl Sandberg Junior High School Orchestra, a licensed raffle by the Rolling Meadows Chamber of Commerce, and live music throughout the day by Josh Patterson. And finally, we wish to extend our sincere thanks to the generous donation of time by the volunteers of the Rolling Meadows Community Events Foundation. They will include, they will provide crucial exhibitor support and other needed activities during the event, so we thank that group very much for their time.
Thank you for that report. Are there matters not on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn? Majikis has made that, it's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're done.